Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call the order of the June 3 meeting of the Sling County Board of Commission where the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Grievous?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Weath?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on the agenda today. And please state your name and address.
Norv Manilson. Code of Conduct, how many commissioners have ever read it? Thank you. At the May 27 Planning and Zoning meeting I attended, someone said that no one contacted the Planning and Zone Director about the fireworks application. Wrong. I went to the Planning and Zone office. I talked with the director. I pointed out errors in the application. He said he would correct it. The wording on the application does not match the legal description. I forgot to bring the map with me. I even mentioned this to a county employee who was there. The fill at 140-135 contains hazardous materials. Enters the groundwater, calcium chloride chemicals, it will burn you. I worked in it. Who proved this? We already have issues with water here. Why are we adding more? That setback should be 1,000 feet from the state highway. The amount of explosives at that site are terrible. My uncle was a licensed demolition man. I know how to do this stuff. But you don't want to do that. ATF will come after you. We took, he took, he took the trees out of Phillips Lighting. Somebody needs to fire it. Where is Trump? This battery farm, we're having the same issues with water. You drink it. We need clean water. Shame on you. Does this have a liner like at the landfill? This is a year-round site. This is not about the groundwater issue like at the airport. How many of you know about this water issue at Sundowner West? I've spoke to you about this issue. Contaminated water, underground. The water moves underground. You're gonna, and this is a year-round site, you're gonna have this issue all along. Look at your grandkids. This concrete is for sale locally. This site will be there year-round for your drinking water. Travel moves underground. Drinking water, human use, Sundowner West. EMS recommends that we don't even use that drinking water out there at Sundowner West. And I don't. So let the application find another location. This needs to be readdressed. Firework comes in different sizes. You need to consult your attorney. There's other things that are gonna drink this water beside humans, dogs, cats, horses. This is an ongoing issue. Potassium nitrate is what them explosives are made of. It's my kids.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Here and at this time, we will move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, and approval of employment agreement with Shawn Robertson. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move into action items.
Pride Month proclamation with Ridding Gonzalez.
I don't see anyone here for that, so I guess we could just move on to the next item, and if somebody shows up, we'll come back to that.
Next item, please.
Policy revisions with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request is to revise several policies that we have attached. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to read through those. We did redline them, so it's easier to see what the updates are. We did update, or we audited the policy for the updates. Some of it have just some minor language. Some of them had some major rewrites to those, just to comply with current standards. We also created a new section with employee safety and moved those policies to that section. There was really only one policy that had some discussion on it, and it had to do with the definition of absenteeism. After everybody kind of agreed that the way it was proposed is fine to let each department define what they mean as excessive. And so the alternatives for action today are to approve those as presented, do not approve those, or direct staff to go back and make some revisions and present at a later date. Our recommendation is to approve the policies. And I'm available for questions.
I don't have any. Chairman, I would, oh, you're gonna, oh.
Any other discussion or comments? Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on that? Nothing from the public? I will turn it back over, bring it back commission for possible action.
I would move that we approve RFA 2025-69 as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and second to approve RFA 2025-69 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item.
Revised County Administrator Job Description with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning again. This request is to approve the proposed job description for the county administrator. This was most recently updated back in February, and the proposed draft does revise a few of the professional standards within that, and then the minimum qualifications that we hope would help us out with future recruiting for the position and succession planning purposes. The alternatives for action are to approve as proposed, do not approve that as proposed, or direct staff to make some changes and come back for further consideration at a later date. Our staff is to approve as presented. Available for questions.
Anyone from the public who'd wish to speak? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve RFA 2025-70 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve RFA 2025-70 as presented, and I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks.
Revision to County Administrator Code with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. As you can tell by the last couple of items, we're doing a little bit of cleanup work this morning. So one of the items is back a couple decades ago, actually, the commission changed the county code regarding the county administrator position to include a job description. We've since made lots of changes to the job description, but we've never gone back and changed code. So the proposal today would be to strip that language specific to the job description out of the code, reference the job description that's maintained by human resources, and then just have some pretty generic language that aligns with the way we actually work. So staff would recommend adoption of Resolution 25-2426, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Really don't have any. It's pretty much set and dried there. Thank you. Good proposal. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2025-71 as presented.
And could I, could I also get you to reference the resolution number? I think that was an error.
Yes.
It's Resolution 25-2426.
25 dash?
2426.
Yeah, that's a misprint on ours, I think.
Yeah, it's a...
I'll amend my motion to approve RFA 2025-71, Resolution 25-2426.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Human Resources Quarterly Update with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Hey, Marilyn. Back one more time. This interval is mid-February to May 2025. During this time, we had 18 new hires, 27 that transferred or had a promotion. We have 26 that are no longer employed. The turnover rate is approximately 7.4%. Little higher than normal, but I do want to note that we had six retirements during that timeframe. Safety Committee committee activities, we reviewed 17 injury reports. It was pretty inflated this time. That happens with some training that the Sheriff's Office does for their defensive tactics. So we had a few more injuries than normal. We did inspect three of the offices here in the City County Building, on the second floor, the south side of the building. We didn't have any recommendations for, or suggestions for prizes, so we did not award any this quarter. Miscellaneous activities, revised several policies today, doing negotiations with the Work Committee. We did do a presentation with them with our insurance consultancy biz. They did kind of an insurance 101 presentation for them. I attended a supervisory leadership training on April 8th to the 10th, working on salary and benefit projections during this time. And we did process another off-site payroll, just as a part of our continuity of operations. We did that back in April. Upcoming plans, beginning plans for open enrollment for our new plan year for October 1, our annual in-service training day. I listed quite a few positions that are vacant there, but that has been narrowed down to about half of what is there. We had some luck last week filling a few positions. So we are actively recruiting for seven positions right now. With the budget update, with seven months into our health plan year, we're running favorable at 87.1%. With seven months into the dental plan, we're running at 96%, so we're still good on that. And then the 25 budget for HR is at 34%, which is in line with historical HR operations. And I'm available for questions.
Where'd you do your off-site?
Sheriff's Office this time.
Sheriff?
Uh-huh. We've done it a couple times at Roden Bridge and at the Sheriff's Office.
Good.
So we feel pretty comfortable that if, you know, electricity was down in our building that we would need to go to another department, we can do it successfully.
Good.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item.
County Administrator Update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. I just wanted to follow up on two items from last Tuesday. First, the commission approved a direction on fireworks and asked staff to bring back a resolution. And in talking about that, it's June already, and we feel like people, particularly retailers, have already sort of made their plans for this year largely, and so we would propose to not bring that resolution back to you until after the 4th of July and have it effective for next year, just so there's no confusion out there.
So that makes sense.
So, okay. The other item is regarding a search for a new county administrator. So you all sort of narrowed the universe of choices from four down to two, at least that's what Marilyn and I heard last, last week. So wanted to see if we could get you down to one today. Are there any other questions that commissioners have or pieces of information that we could provide you in an attempt to sort of settle on something?
Can you just refresh the two that, I know which one I want, but can you refresh everybody on the two that was left hanging?
Yes. So basically, the direction as we understood it from last week was for HR to take the lead on a search, and the options were do it solo or do it with some outside assistance. And so that was sort of, kind of where we understood that that was the remaining choice.
I think that was true. I heard people say they would be okay with one or the other, but I, I would choose to, after your comments and your work with Marilyn, I would choose that go with the HR with some outside assistance. That's my choice.
I would just like to ask, it's like, what, what is your recommendation from the two of you together? I'm sure you've had quite the conversation in regards to this. How do you feel about the search going one way or the other?
You know, I think it would be fine either way. I referenced last week my experience as a candidate. I think it's slightly unusual to be dealing directly with HR in that process, but I did it. It was fine. And, you know, I think when Marilyn and I've talked, they're, an outside consultant would bring some perspective to the search that we might not otherwise get within, you know, within-house HR, but otherwise, I mean, she recruits all day, every day, so, you know, we'll sort of six one half dozen the other.
And the reason, I disagree, I mean, and the way of getting any outside, like I said, I've sat through this process, I've sat through this process with the city. You know, I think that if the commission thinks or knows or even has an inkling that we've got some qualified people in-house, or some qualified people we know, I just can't see going out and paying an outside firm any type of money to do what we can do. A consultant is very expensive. You know, in watching what they're doing right now with the city manager, I mean, that, that was a cluster to start with when they had the guy come in and, you know, get, you know, get stuff together for that. My opinion is, is like I said, I would, I would, I'm not in favor of hiring any outside help unless we did, unless we are for sure that we don't have anybody that we feel that is qualified for that position.
I would like to hear from Marilyn, hear what you think, because you do do it every day, all the time, and you've, I've seen you work on it, and so I know your ability. And I'm not, I agree, if we have in-house applicants, that's, that's exciting and wonderful, but that doesn't mean you still don't want a full, wide perspective, so.
I would agree with that, and I do think if you have one of the, the mix of HR in a firm on a limited basis, they do have a little wider outreach and know where they might be successful in that marketing. So I, you know, if we did, I think it needs to be that number four option, that, not the full consultant, but the limited one, if the commission decides to go that direction.
And do you have a price quote? Have anybody checked anything on what that would cost?
Yeah, I've gotten three different quotes, and they're in the 9,500 to 12,500.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I just want to ask you a question, because I know in the past, and there's been certain things that you, do you have a clientele out there that you send a request for to say, hey, do, different applications available out there in the market?
So I think that's what a firm would help us do, is, is hit some of those beyond the, the normal ones. You know, we would probably do the Kansas Association of Counties, the League of Municipalities, some of those normal ones, National Association of Counties, but they might have a little further outreach that might hit some other ones that I would not be aware of.
When would we have to hire this firm in the process?
You know, I think probably not until September. You know, as I said, I did get three proposals, so, you know, there might be, if commissioners were interested, there might be an ability for a commissioner to work with me and Marilyn and review those proposals and interview those folks and see if you wanted to recommend something to your colleagues, or, you know, if that's not the way we want to go, if we want to go just with HR, then that's fine.
Well, that price didn't scare me, and I'm comfortable with that. I just wonder, is there a point where we look in-house, and then if we don't feel comfortable with that, then we hire this firm? Or is that slow us down?
I don't think it would slow us down. I mean, if we're not really going to engage until September, there can be an in-house process prior to that, and you can measure any in-house candidates and then decide if you need to go to that next step.
That, that makes sense to me, just, I mean, as long as, I was hoping that we weren't gonna have to decide this today, the contract, but the, but the, but the money doesn't scare me, it's just that I would rather go in-house if, if we have qualified people. And maybe we don't have anybody that's interested in it, I don't know. I haven't talked to anybody, so.
So would that slow us down if we, you said no, right?
I don't think so.
So if you, because in-house would be open?
Right. We could, you know, open it up for, you know, two weeks, a month, to in-house candidates and, and then try to get that piece completed by September if we would need to engage with a firm. Yeah. Okay.
I just want to ask a question here. When you're talking about in-house, does that mean you soliciting, or you mean just in-house here in the Sling County?
It would be, it would be a posting within Seline County employees that could apply.
Not going to the KAC or?
Well, I guess it could be either.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, depending, depending on what the commission wants, right? I mean, I guess, so, define our terms a little bit here. When Marilyn says in-house, she means limit to existing employees, but if what I'm hearing from the commission is, let's have HR take a run at it first, and then if we don't get good candidates, then go to a firm, that's a different, you know, that could potentially have KAC and other folks involved.
My, my comments were in-house.
Okay.
Employees. That was my comments, so. But that, that's just me.
My, my only concern is if we, if we limit it, if we do it in-house to start with, there's a potential of another Philip Smith Haynes out there that we never get to hear from. And I'd, I'd hate to think we'd let that slip through our fingers. I don't disagree.
I see your point. I really do.
Yeah. But kind of, I like, I like the idea of doing the local search, and then if our pool of candidates doesn't meet our needs, then hire that firm. I don't know.
I agree with that. More than outside of in-house?
Yeah.
I mean, just more local?
Just, all right.
So let HR handle it first, and if we aren't satisfied with the applicants, then hire the consultant.
Right. Yes.
I'd be okay with that.
I, I look at it as, as the in-house thing is like, you know, since in-house is the KAC, I mean, since they're pretty local, I mean, here, state, and you open it up to here, and if you actually went out and touched the, the county base, I mean, that's easy for you to do.
Right.
So that's, that's what I was looking at, is that at least you're touching this geographical territory.
Right. You know, I could put it out there for Kansas Association County, League of Municipalities, National Association of Counties, the city managers' organization. We can hit those, and if we're not successful?
Then hire.
Then we, the firm can see, what did we miss?
That's, I would like to see that. That's me, though.
Or after that, we might find that we have our answer right here, too.
Right.
Yes. Right. But we have a pool.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. I think we've got direction. Thank you. That is what I needed from today, so I appreciate that very much.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Next item.
Commissioners' comments.
I really don't have any.
None.
At all. I just want to say thank you for all the updates that were proposed for the, today that we processed and got taken care of for everybody, employees and for the administrator that look at, so thank you. Next.
I'd like to make one announcement. So yesterday at noon was the filing deadline for city school and a couple of special district elections this year. We will not have a primary in Seline County, so the next election will be November 4th. So you can get on our website on, under the Election Department and see the current list of candidates, as well as, the calendar will be out there shortly, and you can also check on your voter registration and make sure you're up to date if you've moved or changed your name or anything, you want to get that updated before the deadline, so.
Jamie has a point of interest. How much savings was that to the county by not having to have a primary?
So in, in odd-year elections and city school elections, if a primary is done, it is just within the district that had the number of candidates requiring a primary, and that district actually pays for that. The only thing the county would have to pay would be our employee time. So, but the rest of it would be covered by that district, so.
When you say district, if it's a city commission primary?
Right. So if the city of Salina needed a primary, the city of Salina would pay for that.
They're the district.
If it was like a school district, like USD 306, they would actually have to, to pay for that primary.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Roof insurance.
Good morning. So, like fireworks, this is another discussion point. Back in May of last year, I don't know if the commission recalls, we had a pretty bad storm that came through, did a lot of hail damage to several old sheriff's office vehicles, but unfortunately also did some damage to our brand-new sheriff's office and jail, just to the roof area. So not damage enough to make any type of structural issues to it, no leaks, anything like that. A lot of it was very, well, it is, all of it was very cosmetic. So the deductible on that building was 700,000. The estimate for the damages was just over 400,000, so we didn't meet the deductible. But we do have had an insurance deductible buy-down policy with some quirks to that, but we did get some insurance money for that particular event. So the discussion that I wanted to have with you is the commission's desire to make those cosmetic repairs to the building.
I'm a no.
I'm a no? I mean, cosmetic, I, I'm thinking there's some cosmetic things I'd like to do, and I'm not doing them, so, I know, I'm a no. I should just say that.
I want to ask the question. Go ahead.
What, what does it do for the future, for the next event? What, what does it do for the future, for the next event, where it becomes?
Right. So, obviously, you know, you run the risk of if there was a thunderstorm event, it would be difficult for insurance to decide what's old damage and what's new damage. So, the risk obviously could be the next event, we, again, would not meet the deductible and not receive any type of insurance payout.
But if the next event caused some structural leaking or something, could they, could they say, well, that was probably caused by the first event, not this event, so?
I think that's a little bit of a lower chance, just because it's, it's been a year, and we haven't had that event, but I think there's always that risk that you run.
Okay. So, I want to ask another question then, because I was quick to say no, and I still feel that way, but it's cosmetic, we have another one, it causes more cosmetic damage. You're saying that there's a higher risk that we wouldn't get insurance dollars?
That's correct.
But if any structural damage came, because right now they've reviewed it, and there's no structural such as leakage and stuff.
Correct.
If we said no this time, the structural damage would probably be met.
I, I think that's a, a little bit of the risk that you run. I think it's a little bit unlikely, but with insurance claims and the world of insurance these days, I, I think there's always risks involved.
What was the estimate for repair?
And the fact that we've switched insurance companies in the meantime, too, so you've got that dynamic as well.
And the repair cost?
When you say cosmetic, I mean, is, is this something that the human eye, I mean, can we see what cosmetic damage there is from?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, we do have some pictures, so, I think if, so you look at the, the building of the Sheriff's Office and the jail, there is the metal roofing, and of course, so like the metal caps on the roof, HVAC systems and whatnot, you can, you can definitely see the damage.
Okay.
Yeah. Looks like somebody took like a baseball bat to it.
And the cost repairs?
Cost, well, the estimate was four hundred and fifteen thousand, and?
And how much did we receive?
Three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Oh, we got that much?
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that. Okay.
Okay. One of my other questions is like you say, right now it's cosmetic on, on, on the metal roof and all these other things, and I just know, as soon as you put a ding in that metal roof, rust will start, and pretty soon, over a period of time, you got leaks going on. So, I can see where right now it's cosmetic, but after a period of time, that little dent in a metal roof becomes a, a big issue later on time. So, I, I would be in favor, if it's that close of a time to get fixed, I'd, I would go with the deal of?
Can, can you tell me then, so, four hundred thousand's the estimate, and we got three hundred and fifteen thousand?
Uh, three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
For fourteen thousand.
I, I did not, I did not get that first information.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yes, sorry.
I thought it was a four thousand. I heard you say some money, but I didn't know an amount. So, I'm going to change my vote, too, in respect to your rusting holes. I'm going to change it to vote yes.
Yes, well, thank you. But I, that's the way I would love to see this go, but one of five.
I'm sure the budget could use that three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but, but I feel that, that would put us back to prime roof. The insurance carrier would say, okay, any damage that happens from here on out is on us if we do the repairs, so, I, I wish I could hand you three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the budget, but I'm, I'm with Annie. I, I say fix the roof.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Thank you for that feedback.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Have an executive session?
Staff would request that the Commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a department head employee evaluation for seven minutes and return to this room at nine forty-one AM.
So, moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve going into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're back in session, and no action taken, so can I hear a motion for adjournment?
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.